All this meeting. Into order, uh, General, please roll call.
Councilmember Louie. Bressa. Councilmember Halleck.
Presents.
Councilmember Shirley.
Here.
Mayor Donaldson.
Here. If you'd please join me in the pleasure of.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
And before we get started with public comment, the city manager and I just attended a office of emergency services meeting. Where they talked about some significant flooding that is about to occur on the peninsula. Apparently, there's a large body of water that is in the Solidad region right now in the Salinas River that will ultimately make its way down. Uh, through Spreckles and into Barina. And they're saying that this type of flooding that they expect is comparable to what we had in nineteen eighty-three. So a lot of the same things, if you were around that long here on the peninsula, a lot of the same things that happened then. Will most likely happen now. And what they're talking about specifically is that along Highway sixty-eight. Where you, uh, have the intersection go to Spreckles and Downriver Road. That is probably going to be closed and flooded. Also, the areas of Blanco Road, Davis Road. Reservation Road, and then potentially Highway one. Uh, where the Salinas River goes underneath it. So what they're expecting is that it will hit a high peak tomorrow at around noon. And then slowly subside, uh, on Friday. And that will happen where it will continue to subside throughout the weekend. So that's what their models are predicting. Now, they're going to send out a, a press release and, um. A, uh, basically a, a notice that describes. Yeah, that the city manager will make sure is posted on our website. Uh, our Facebook page, next door. All of those mechanisms to get the word out. But in a lot of cases like this, the, the best way to get the information now is from neighbor to neighbor. So please pass that along to, to other neighbors that, that situation is going to be occurring in the next, next, uh. Few weeks, in, in the next hours. Um, you'll see a lot of it on the news as well. Although Delray Oaks is not directly affected. The, the biggest issue is getting either stuck on the peninsula if you're trying to get out. Um, or not being able to get back in. So what you have to do is make sure that folks that do have plans that are outside of the city. That need to get back over the weekend, that you take that into consideration. And if you have any plans where you are going to leave the peninsula, that also take that into consideration. So I just wanted to pass that along, you're going to see a lot of it on, on the news and CNN. And the other media outlets, but I just wanted to share that with you. And like I said, we'll, we'll put the word out as best we can and please pass that along to your neighbors. Okay, with that, um, public comments, um, are next. General public comments must deal with matters subject to the jurisdiction of the city and council that are not on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council on matters not appearing on the agenda, they do so now. The public may comment on any other matter listed on the agenda at the time the matter is being considered. There will be a timeline of not more than three minutes for each speaker. No action will be taken on matters brought up under this item and all comments will be referred to staff. Public comment is now open.
Mayor. I have two, I have a letter to read that was sent to me by a resident. Can everybody hear me?
Mm-hmm.
This is from Jen Clark, Beaverton. During the January fifth meeting, we heard people talking about why the council needed Ms. Kerr because of her experience. These are the same people that four years ago promoted removal of Jerry and Kristen and Dennis because of their experience. They argued that we needed fresh face and fresh eyes, so which is it? These are the same people that just voted John Bowie into office with no planning commission or other experience. Yet now they want us to place Ms. Kerr on the council because of her experience, which is it? And do you think for a moment that given the opportunity four years ago, Ms. Kerr would have given even. A millisecond of consideration of appointing Jerry Edel into a council seat? Using the argument that Ms. Kerr got the second most votes is illogical. To say as some citizens and council member surely did, that it is obvious. That the four hundred and thirty-two votes that Ms. Kerr got clearly show the voters would have wanted her on the council. What they neglected to say was four hundred and seventy people voted to remove her and did not want her in that position. To say that she got second most votes does not hold up mathematically. Had everyone voted for two council as they, that they were supposed to. Using the current percentages, Louise would have ended up with three hundred and seventy-six plus one hundred and fifty-four for a total of five hundred and thirty. A much greater value than the four hundred and thirty achieved by Ms. Kerr. Thank you.
That is.
That's end.
One, okay, thank you. All right, we'll go to the next item, which is. We, we do have another public comment?
Yes.
Well, I wasn't sure because what I wanted to comment about is what's on the agenda, so should I just?
Okay, you'll have the opportunity once that item comes.
Just want to make sure.
Okay, so we'll go to the next item, which is to discuss and establish an evaluation tool to guide your view of the council vacancy candidate applications. And with that, I'll get it to the city manager.
Right, okay, thank you, Mayor, thank you, council. Um, so, uh. After the last meeting, we, uh, reviewed what the direction was from the council and went back and. And watched the, uh, meeting number again to make sure we got everything right. So the direction was to follow the process that we've done in the past, which is similar to, uh, when we appointed planning commissioners. Or anybody to another commissioner committee. Uh, and then scheduled this meeting so that you all could, uh, discuss an evaluation tool. Um, this is actually a fun meeting for staff because this is one where we get to sit back and watch you guys work. And we just try to capture what it is you all work and help you guide, guide you in the work. Uh, so to that end, you know, we, we've done some work doing research. Um, but to start off, uh, there were a couple of things beyond the motion. Proven unanimously, uh, that I think at least through consent, you all agreed to, uh, when we were up here the last time. And the first of those is that you wanted the core values, the city core values to guide this discussion. And whatever type of tool you come up with would be based off of what the city's core values are, which I think is an excellent idea. Um, but to help you with that. Uh, we printed out for you the mission statement and the vision, uh, statements for the city. Uh, they're also on the table out there if anybody in the community wants to follow along. Uh, if you want to cheat and follow the mission statement, it's right, right here on the wall. Uh, so we, we have that, the mission statement and the vision statement. Uh, we also printed out the core values, uh, for you and that's out there also. Um. But then also we went and looked because, you know, whenever we're doing anything here, we look for policies and laws to try to guide. But then the actions that we do and whatever we do for the city to minimize risk for the city. Uh, but we also look for best practices and what other jurisdictions did. So, so we've done research, um, on what have other jurisdictions done in this case, the bill of capital vacancy. It actually happens fairly regularly, about every two years. Um, and. Police is the crap and will send, will send their children. Uh, um. So, so we've looked at what other jurisdictions have done. Um, and for the most part, uh, the process that we found is, is the process that you all agreed on. It's to do with some type of appointment. And then it'll be brought. And there, you know, there, there are some variations in how that works. Do you have questions that are preset? Uh, how many questions, all that, that thing, and, and how do you choose the, uh, order of people to be interviewed and all of that kind of thing? But generally speaking, the, the process is the same. Um, I could not find, doesn't mean it doesn't exist. But in the short time that, that sat had to do the research, uh, I didn't find any example of rubrics that have been used in this kind of process. Uh, I did find one or two examples or rubric that suggested recently, uh, but weren't used by councils. Because it was just, it didn't move, but for you, I would prefer. So it doesn't mean it hasn't been done, I just haven't found an example, I'm really trying to find examples. Uh, because I thought that would have been helpful. Uh, so what we did look at and what we printed out, and again, it's also out there on the table if anyone wants to look at. Is what one of our sister agencies here on the peninsula did recently, which is the city of Monterey. And they followed an appointment process with interviews and everything. And very similar to you all, they wanted to focus on what are their strategic, uh, plans and what are their core values? And they call them value directors. Uh, and then they come up with questions that are similar to that. Um, and so we printed that out. And then because great minds think alike, just before the meeting, Councilmember Shirley, uh, was kind enough to share with us the work she had done. And putting that tool together, uh, which actually. Follows the same kind of thing I was just talking about with our core values and then with questions, very similar to what the city of Monterey did. Um, and so we, we printed that out with the council members. Uh, and then I'll put that on the screen so that the community can see those too, get that if you choose the work up. Uh, so I think, uh, I, I think we have a good place to start since we're starting with our core values. And so that will turn back to you, Mayor, and staff is ready to answer any question.
Okay, thank you, city manager. So what I'll do is ask the, the council if there are any questions for staff. And then at that point, I'll, uh, make it available for public comment. And then I'll bring it back to the council for further discussion. So with that, questions from the council. Is there any question?
Yeah.
Okay. Then I'll open it up for public comment, are there any public comment?
Yeah. I give a little shout out, so sometimes it might take me a tiny bit longer to go through this, but I've tried to go through this, so I'm really gonna try and hit it first. You hear me okay? Oh.
Susan can't hear you back. I can hear you back.
Okay. Speaking of them.
Yeah.
Let me know, does that work?
Yeah.
Okay, here I go. Um, I wanted to preface what I have to say here so that you will understand where I'm coming from on this. Um, I have knowledge about the qualities that make a good effective council person because during the forty years. As an attorney, I served as president of the Orange County chapter of the GoToBar Association. Which had a twelve-member board. On the national board of the GoToBar Association. The eighteen-member board of the Directors of Orange County Bar Association, all of which were elected positions. Two selection committees of, to choose better judges and other examples of many different committees and councils. I can assure you that experience was not the most important factor for anyone seeking positions on any of the council boards or committees. The four qualities I believe are the most important are truthfulness. What is the point in having someone in office if we can't believe and rely on what they are saying? Truthfulness includes not altering or admitting facts relevant to any discussion in order to support someone's own personal agenda. Integrity, which embodies not only truthfulness, ethics, and strong moral principles. But also courage, because people must be able to accept, acknowledge, and learn from their mistakes. Doing what is right for DRO no matter what it. Contradicts in their personal feelings. This would also include giving credit where credit is due and not taking credit for efforts of someone else. Ability to listen with an open mind. Which means not sitting around and thinking of what you're going to say next while someone is talking. Or negating what is being said because it does not comport with your opinion. The ability to be a team member, which means following the direction of the majority. Working with others to accomplish the goals of DRO instead of the three. And taking a backseat if you are no longer in a leadership role, which is generally very difficult to do. Experience is not necessarily an important qualification. The only plus of having experience was if there was a question about something which had occurred in the past. In the case of DRO, there are already two people currently on the council who have history for the last few years. And staff who have been here far longer and have vastly more knowledge than anyone currently or most recently on the city council. Based upon the last city council meeting, I would point out that considering in any manner the number of votes that were received in the last year of election. It's extremely inappropriate to compare the number of votes. Uh, one candidate received in one race of two people, but the number received by someone in a different race. Is totally irrelevant. We all know not all people who voted vote for everyone on the ballot. As for the educational rubric. I think that having a points system is probably not appropriate for a city council position, which should be based on a more subjective standard. Divisiveness has occurred within our city. And it will continue as long as we select criteria which would allow someone who's basically voted out of office. To a certain per- virtually the same position. That is not going to bring down rate votes together, it will only create. Thank you. Hi, I'm Petri Spethiotti. As you know. What I want in a city council person is someone who is honest and has demonstrated the trust for the nation. Is guided by ethics. Person who is dedicated and keeps their commitment. Is critically responsible. Responsive to residents' needs, is educated. Not just about the city, but about the region, and is intended above. I want someone who believes in transparent government. Stands up for what they believe and bases their beliefs on facts. And has both a short and long-term vision that they are able to clearly articulate. Thank you.
Petri's. Are there any other public comments? Can you hear me? Everything while I put my eyes on you. And this might hurt, I'm a fifteen back to place.
Evening, everyone, Mayor and the council members. There's always talk about being transparent and the word is used often with accusations that Delray Oaks politics weren't transparent in the past. An example of lack of transparency is when a group of people privately organized with an agenda to have a candidate place an office in a meeting that did not have purpose on the agenda. It gets very hot even if two of the council members are directly involved in this backdoor action. With the intent of strong-arming the elected officials to make an appointment. When no one was given notice of this, either remotely on the agenda. Saying clearly there is no consent here, one pass. To follow, the two council members then tried to create rules for an applicant that would prevent most of Delray Oaks citizens from running, um. For open position. Sacking everything in favor of the former mayor, making this a no-contest appointment. This does not seem like a fair practice or possibly even legal since it's not part of the established process. And not the agenda of the last week's special meeting. This is not transparency. What is transparent here is an ill-minded attempt to circumvent our system. Designed to appoint a council member to a vacant position. What is transparent is that a, a ringleader has convinced her cohorts to attempt to execute a plan that would place the ringleader. Into this position in a manner that circumvents due process in such a way that one can only call it a device. Which is another word that has been thrown around regarding previous administrations. These are the terms that are being used by Allison's followers and by the two council members that are involved in this orchestration, transparent and divisive. What is really transparent is their attempt to establish a criteria for this appointment process that would eliminate. Practically any potential candidate from being appointed other than their ringleader. I point out to you that the mayor and everyone on this council, including Allison, was elected without having a pre-quali, to pre-qualify. To the criteria that council members surely and Louie are attempting to enact for this plan. Is that transparent enough for you or did that all sound a bit divisive? They have meant and orchestrated this maneuver and is their hidden agenda because they do not accept the results of our last election. Sound a little bit like January sixth? They are attempting to place Allison as the backup mayor, which tells us they do not intend to work with their fellow council members. And newly elected mayor by Freddie and Gory, which will be led by Allison. Does this sound a little divisive to you? I would say so. Coming to a special meeting that is intended to discuss and establish, uh, filling the vacancy. Coming to this meeting stating that Allison should be appointed because no one else has thrown their hat around. This was not the intention of the meeting, nor did this give anyone a fair opportunity to throw their own hat. In a setting since this was not the, nor not the time or the place to do so. The city voted out who they wanted to govern the city and Allison was not their choice. By appointing Allison, you have just gone against, voided, and negated the public's votes. Appointing Allison would give her the majority voice, which through hidden agendas will render Mr. Donaldson's term as mayor invalid. Not only are they attempting to overturn an election, but also negate any ability for the mayor to conduct the city's business with the support of council. Allison has enlisted in meetings to do her work. Allison's agenda is, is her way, is the only one, that's her agenda. Is this Mr. Louise's idea of fresh base and fresh ideas? I should hope not. Is this Mr. Shirley's? Or divisiveness? Again, please remember that citizens of Delray Oaks voted not to have Allison govern their city. And Allison did not run for city council, being very conservative.
Are there any other public comments?
Hey, everyone, uh, Justice Cillian sent me for Carlton Drive. Um, I'm here tonight. To voice my concern for the process that has taken place and already a biases that's already been created. By a new council member, Louie, Louie and, uh, Ms. Shirley over there. Um, I think it's really, really sad that we're already picking somebody for a position without following the process. The due process and already speeding, uh, speeding this up to get one person in. And you're here to represent every person in the city, okay? Not just yourselves in your own, in your own groups or whatever you guys got going on. This should be a shared heritage for everyone. And I feel like you guys take that away. So now that this process is going to happen, there's already a biases with you guys that are here to vote on this. And that this clearly shows a big light in the sand of where you stand instead of sitting back. And being a good council member, taking everything in and following the due process. I think you guys have missed that terribly. So, uh, my concern is, is the biases already happening here on this dice. That you guys are committing and putting forward, and I think that's sad. So I hope it, it, uh, finds its way to the right way. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Any other city or?
Good evening, my name is Cam, I'm one of your newest members of Delray Oaks. And I'm very happy to be in this beautiful town. Then I can tell you every single day as I walk around or drive around, I say, I can't believe. I am living in this location, it is a dream come true for a girl coming from Detroit. The country is in a very divisive position at this time. And it was truly my hope that when we came to the beautiful location. That those kinds of divisiveness that we see throughout our country could be set aside. And that everyone will be considering what it means to be a member of this community. Which I am now so pleased to be a member of. I just hope that we can now take this opportunity of this process to step out. Take a breath. Remove any of that feeling that have come from the last few months or years. And really think about our mission, our goal, and our vision. For what we want for this community and I intend to stay for the rest of my life. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments?
Mayor, I have a letter that was sent to me.
Yes.
In regards to. Jen Clark. Over the past twenty years, we have not had. We have had, not had such a, an evaluation tool. And our city coun- sitting council has had great success in selecting from individuals that have shown interest in being part of the council. Applicants are only required to be a resident of the city, a registered and a registered voter. Those sitting on the council now met those qualifications. To put additional requirements on someone applying to be appointed should not be allowed. There are four people on the council. Might I propose that each of you are given the opportunity to submit two questions that you think are relevant to city staff. And then they compile the results. If there are duplicates, that's a good thing, just consolidate and then the remaining X number of questions. Concerns. Since councilmember Shirley and Louie have already shown their bias towards Ms. Kerr. I don't know how anyone can expect them to be unbiased either by in their questions or in their selection votes. The legal question that needs to be answered by our attorney is whether they have to recuse themselves for the selection. Process altogether or just recuse themselves for voting for Allison Kerr. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Okay, public comment is now closed. I'll bring it back to the council for discussion, I'll start with the member Shirley.
Sure. So, did you all receive my tool that I started? I, I find it nerve-wracking to publicly create something on why. Cause I spent some time, uh, today trying to put together something that we maybe start from, if you're, if you're interested. Um, I picked four of our core values. Um, the first four items here, diversity and consensus, responsibility. Open communications and transparency and as part of this community needs and concerns were our four, four values. And then I went through and just looked at the interview questions from Monterey. And tried to apply some of those questions to our core values. And, um, a couple of other questions didn't quite apply. And so I also created the categories of conflict management and decision-making. I thought those were standard also for sort of hiring rubrics. And this isn't a typical rubric because it's not complete. I didn't finish, you know, completing the narratives of competency levels. Thinking that, well, that was a lot of work, I'm not sure if we really want to go there in terms of, of having a tool. We can sort of judge on our own, maybe how we want to grade each of these criteria. But, um, I, I like this because I felt like, again, it used our core values. It applied interview questions that have been used before. Um, and I wanted to present it to all of you and question whether you'd like to move forward with this.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Allen.
Thank you, Mayor Donaldson. So, uh, I'm sure that we can all agree that, uh, it is imperative to, uh, fill the fifth seat on this city council, uh, with, uh, efficiency. And effectiveness, uh, so that we can, uh, continue to be a strongly cohesive and, uh, and effective, uh, council. And, uh, do the best by the city. Um, an evaluation tool is certainly in order, in my opinion. Um. As I see it, we already have an evaluation tool, or tools as it were, uh, in place currently. Uh, we have, uh, four, uh, capable, um, city council members. Uh, this is, this system, uh, as proposed, uh, in the, or as motioned, uh, has been in place, is in place. has been in place, is in place currently, has been in place consistently, uh, for decades, uh, and has appointed both, uh, many planning commissioners and city council members, uh, most if not all of which have made incredibly positive contributions, uh, to the city. It is a fair and subjective process that is offered equally to all qualified residents. It's inclusive, targeting one of our core values. It's inclusive, uh, in that the, uh, the public, uh, have the opportunity to comment on, uh, on the process and during the process. Um, during the presentation, um, I believe that we all have the, the intuition and the, um, the sight to see, uh, according to our core values that we all choose to lead by. Um. We essentially evaluate as we're listening to, uh, an applicant by way of their, uh, their verbal presentation, the three minutes. We are looking for these qualities and characteristics, perhaps even a couple more, uh, to get a well-rounded holistic sense of who we would agree to join us in being of service to the community. Um, also, uh, we have the opportunity to question, council members have the opportunity to question each applicant to further explore, uh, how consistent they are with our core values. Uh, and so although not a numeric scorecard or a rubric per se, we essentially already have one in place since, uh, paperwork. I appreciate the input from the public this evening, again, targeting, uh, our core values, some very important characteristics, um, qualities that we look for in, uh, in each other and in potential applicants. Uh, in finishing, I would like to ask through the mayor to address, uh, the city attorney directly. Uh, in the last meeting, you and the code, um, stamps me, but you had, um, outlined how state law applies to, uh, the election process. Of course, that would be an election process. This is an appointment. Assuming there may be some differences, there may be some similarities. I am curious, uh, and as would be in public, I'm sure, and perhaps the rest of the council, if you could expound on, uh, any applicable details, either now in direct response or at the mayor's direction, uh, post discussion, uh, however you see fit, see fit, and, and particularly how much, are there any constraints, um? What purview have we, uh, from a legal standpoint? Uh, what sort of criteria limitations, uh, can we in fact set? There are the obvious, but, uh, you know, are we in accord with, uh, with proceeding in such a way, in such a scrutinizing criteria, rubric issue? That's all for me, Mr. Mayor.
Please, sure. So with respect to the question, the, uh, staff report, uh, last week was, as you mentioned, with respect to special elections, with respect to the nomination process, um, while you folks, uh, the requirement was to be a resident and register, um, additional criteria for a nomination can be added. As you alluded to, the criteria can't be based on protected class and the party can be open compared to all who are interested. Um, there's not a tiny body of law on that, as long as the criteria relate to, to the city and serve the city. Uh, I think those are fair games. So it's sort of, it's a bit of a gray area, but as long as, you know, you stay away from protected classifications and things of that nature, um, there's pretty wide latitude as far as criteria.
Thank you. Hey, council member Louie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, everyone, for being here, uh, tonight. Uh, I just want to thank, uh, the city council, uh, uh, for having this development process because I know that I'm still in here, like, this is really like the first time, uh, uh, that this council will be doing a rubric too. And, and of course, uh, this is the, uh, an opportunity since, uh, this is the first time, uh, where we can relate device, uh, to, uh, to make our appointment process, uh, fair, uh, impartial, logical, and transparent, uh, to all our applicants who, who are really like interested to apply and also to our neighbors who are the people, people of Delray Oaks. Yeah, so, uh, so the people of Delray Oaks deserve a good and fair process uh, in the appointment of your fifth council representative. Uh, as the proponent of this idea of having a rubric, uh, it is my intent that the public will be clear on how each of our council members will evaluate our applicants. Isn't this your right to know? Uh, it is important and imperative to be transparent and clear on our evaluation because we as council members are given the task to appoint the fifth council member, which supposedly could have been a task in the will of the people of Delray Oaks. So we don't take this task lightly. It could be messy and time-consuming, uh, but this is worth it. Uh, the people of Delray Oaks deserve a good process. Some people ask, uh, why do we still need a rubric? Uh, the council has never tried this tool before, but their appointments return just fine. Uh, but I say, well, uh, this is an improvement of the process. We have a tool, and I know this is not the first time that you have heard about this word, uh, rubric. Uh, and then the rubric and make the evaluator fair and openly on the things that are important to what we are evaluating for. Would you not want that? I know you have used a rubric before. It may not have been a professionally created one, but you did one, and probably it could have been just a mental rubric. For example, in the last election, when a candidate knocked on your door and introduced themselves, asking for your vote, what mental processing did you embark on? Of course, uh, you didn't vote, uh, for a candidate just merely because he's a resident and a voter here in our town, which is, by the way, that the only requirement of the state to be able to be eligible to run for office. However, we as voters have higher standards than that. We choose our candidates because of some criteria that we would hold dear and important. Some may say, I'm voting for a candidate because of their intelligence or because he or she is nice or because he's, he's very passionate about our issues, and so on and so forth. In other words, we all have these criteria than just voting for a person only because he is a resident of our town. So this is what we want to do tonight. Uh, we want the council, uh, to mimic how a voter would vote for representative if they were the ones doing this task. Our voters have criteria and expectations, and we as a council need to be fair, impartial, logical, and transparent. And one way to achieve this goal is to have a rubric tool. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We have already approved, we've discussed a process that we're gonna use for this appointment. And as you heard, it's a process that we've used in the past to fill planning commission seats. We've used it for council appointments, and it's worked very well. For me, that process has to be as inclusive as possible, where everyone has equal opportunity to apply. And we've, we've heard what, what those requirements are, simply being a resident and a registered voter. And I don't think it should favor any type of particular attributes that those applicants might have. For me, the most important thing is that that person cares and is passionate about this city and its residents, which I've heard a lot of the, the same things from public comment today, and I thank you very much for that. Now, I know this process, and council member Louie alluded to it, is very subjective. I don't feel as though I need a rubric or a scorecard to make a decision on a particular applicant. Um, I, the voters did not. Absolutely, people go through a mental exercise when, when they do that. Um, I personally don't feel as though I need something like that in order for me to make a proper decision. I'm looking for someone who embraces the values of, of the city. And I think some of the questions that are aligned with those values, I think those are important to ask. And I, I think, uh, that's something we can incorporate into this already successful project. And I think that's where the focus needs to be, where we can talk about those questions and see how we would go forward, uh, once we have the opportunity to ask them, at the applicants. So with that, I'll, I'll, any other council member, if you have any questions or further discussion?
I do. Um, so our last council meeting, the unanimous approval was for our current application process and an evaluation. Am I, am I correct?
Yes, that's, yes, and that's the purpose of today's meeting is to establish an assessment tool.
Okay, so I guess my question to you, Mayor, is, is what would, what do you think that would look like?
I think asking questions and, and using the, the feedback from that, that, those questions and the ability to ask those questions to the applicant, um, is, is an assessment tool.
I, I mean, I think when we made that, when, um, Mr. Ray made the amendment to that motion to have a tool, I think it was, maybe it was implied that it would be something that he would be able to use to sort of standardize the questions and, and interview process for those applicants. It was, is that anything missing? Something? Barry was shaking her head no, so is that what we agreed to, what we said?
Is there, is there council member? Uh, a- absolutely, that is what we agreed to. Um, and as its agenda is, I believe the language is to, uh, where am I here? To consider an evaluation tool, I think it may be verified paraphrasing, which is consistent with the, uh, the motion that I put forth and the friendly amendments and the unanimous, uh, agreements by this council. Tonight, uh, in my view, is exactly how to establish said, uh, evaluation tool. Um, council member Uwe, to sum it up in two words, what I, uh, you know, expanded on rather long-windedly, but a, a mental rubric, absolutely, is, uh, is one option, which, which I described in detail, uh, again, without an actual numeric scorecard and whatnot. So, so I think that we are still consistent with and following through with, uh, the motion, the amendments, and the unanimous agreements. It's just, um, I'm looking forward to, uh, to establishing just what that, how that evaluation tool is defined. And as the mayor alluded to, um, that can be compiled of, uh, some agreed-upon direct questions, appointed questions, um, a number of questions, um, uh, parameters, uh, around, uh, uh, public comments, uh, well, not public comment, but, um, the applicant's presentation. I'm absolutely willing and excited about exploring just how that takes shape.
Council member Louie.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, from the last, uh, meeting, when I, uh, proposed the amendment, I was really trying to, I mentioned the, the word rubric. And, uh, and we just need to have really a standard rubric that we can show to the public that these are the, the measures that we are trying to evaluate for applicants. And it's just like, uh, uh, for our voters during the election, of course, we, we have, they may have a mental rubric in their mind. Uh, however, we are not the public. We are just four individuals in here who would try to, uh, fill in that fifth, uh, council seat. And, uh, and I believe that the public has the right to know once we let our evaluation measure, me- measures in here. So that's why I, I, uh, propose for a rubric, which is not a common thing because everybody has heard about this. It's being used in, in many industries and many fields. And we would even use it here in, in city hall, uh, like we have, we have a rubric in here. So, uh, so that was the intent. Uh, 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 I know that we, we need to, I'm, I'm glad that, uh, council member Shirley, uh, had this, uh, draft of a rubric. It looks like a rubric. There are criteria in here, uh, and, and if we can just really like build upon this, uh, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Shirley.
Um, I'd like to make a note that we accept, um, the rubric that I created uh, to use for the interview process on the paperwork.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, um, motion by council member Shirley and a second by council member Louie. Um, here, we have a little call.
Oh, I, I made, I'm sorry. I made a motion to make this step.
Oh, okay. So, go ahead.
Um, well, I, I'm curious. I, I know all about this. Um, I'll, I can say a little bit more. And I feel like it's built off of our core values, off of, um, prior interview questions that have been vetted by, by multiple people. Um, I like this because it standardizes the questions. Um, our applicants will be able to see what, what interview questions they'll, they'll, they'll have when they come up to the dais. Um, the, the public can see what, what we're interested in. I think being able to have an inspection at the council about what we're interested in and, and have it written down on paper, I think is really valuable for our residents and for us as a council. We need to work together. I'd like to see us having these kind of inspections about what we'd like to see. And so, um, having it written down, standardized it, helps us to compare between applicants. Um, we ask the same questions. And, um, and, and so I, I, I like this process. I think, you know, I mean, we have to talk about how, you know, I like this tool. I don't know how we're gonna actually implement it. But, um, so I, I'd like to hear some feedback and your thoughts on this tool that was created.
Okay, thank you. Council member Howard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Hamilton. Um, I agree, uh, the, uh, the categories, criteria are, are entitled as consistent with our core values. Um. I haven't read thoroughly through all of the questions. Um, I'm still just, uh, I, I, I'm just not, uh, I'm just not on board with, with the numeric scoring system. I think the questions according to each core, core value, but I guess we'll have to spend some time in discussing formulating just what the, the rest of those questions are. Um, that could use a little further discussion, I suppose. I just don't see, and, and, and as I stated earlier, that already occurs with the system. Uh, I've seen it time and time again. I was appointed to the planning commission under such conditions. I've seen this in council members. I've seen this in council members, we did, under such conditions with positive result results and uh, never have I seen, uh, nor do I feel the necessity for a point scoring system. I love, again, that you use the term mental rubric, uh, semantics, I suppose, but it's precisely my point. It's exactly what we're doing already. And um, I am a member of the public, actually. Right now, I sit here in efficient capacity, but I am your neighbor and I'm a resident. Uh, as I sit here now, yes, greater responsibility has been put upon all of us. That's why we were elected, uh, with great confidence and hope that we would be able to exercise uh, proper judgment in this, with a certainly difficult at times decision. And so very many more to come. Uh, hopefully resulting in positive progression of our city. We have been tasked with and entrusted by our residents to intuitively, instinctively, and to the best of our ability, uh, make these hard decisions for them as as representatives. And so, uh, again, my point being that I think the system in place, process in place is entirely appropriate.
Thank you, Councilmember Uwe.
Mr. Mayor, I just uh, want to ask a question to Councilmember Howard, uh, because I mean, uh, I don't know, uh, what is this system in place that is already like, you know, getting sound on that, but uh, uh, because uh, in in the teaching field, right, coming from, uh, I we need to have like a rubric system, because if you were my student and then you asked me, how did I rate your essay? Or your uh, your work? And if if I can give you some evaluation measure, how would you feel? And as as my student, and then of course, you're gonna immediately uh, accuse me of not being fair. Uh, maybe I'm playing favorite because uh, 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 one of my student got a higher score than than you did. So so this is basically the the reason why of a rubric. And and why not a mental rubric? Because it's just like clear for our for our public to know. Uh, we can just be putting everything in our mind. We have to be transparent. We are really like being elected here as public official. And as public official, that's one of the uh, really the consequence. You you are public and then your thoughts uh, should be public. And so, uh, so that's my point. And my question to uh, Councilmember Howard would be, what is that system that is in place?
What else, what I'll do is I'll ask the city manager, and this is not just for for your benefit, but for for our public. I'll ask the city manager to describe the the process that was approved at the last meeting.
Yeah, so the process that was that was recommended and I think was approved is similar to what we've done in the past. And we've, staff have gone back and watched the videos of those meetings to see how they were conducted. And they were conducted in ways that played out in the staff report. And uh, we put out an application to the community, an application period. Uh, we utilized the standard application that we use uh, for all of our vacancies on our committees and boards. Um, and the same, the questions are the same. They kind of generally ask what your interest is, uh, what your vision is, uh, if you're selected and what your qualifications are and how you think you would be fit to do the job. Uh, then we get the applications and we present those at a council meeting for consideration. Uh, and then one at a time, the council invites the candidates up to uh, give a personal statement for three minutes. Uh, and then the council asks questions. And then at the end of all the questions for the applicants, there's a public uh, comment period where the public can get up and give their impressions and their recommendations. Uh, and then the council deliberates and when you all vote and slap somebody, and that's that's the process that's been used. Uh, I think to your question, I don't want to answer for the council, but I think that you were asking for more uh, than just the process, but how how you all deliberate and how you, so I'll leave that.
I'm happy to be able, Mr. City Manager, through Mayor, and uh, and you said it there.
And Councilmember Uwe, are there any other comments?
Uh, well, uh, the, so those are the process and still, I know if I was in the public and and watching the the interview and then listening to the deliberation, I'm still, I'm gonna be asking, how did they evaluate the applicant? You know, so, uh, uh, and that's gonna be my question. And 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 my and my intent with this tool is really like to put it out there to the public so that the council members, who will be evaluators, uh, would also be uh, focused on on the criteria, what they really, what they're really gonna be seeing, uh, in the responses of our applicant. So, uh, so that's my, my only uh, concern, that if I ever are gonna be uh, watching the video or or I'm gonna be in the public side. And then where we have this, um, appointment or interview process with all the applicants. But still, I wanna know, uh, how the applicants will be evaluated. Because like, for example, if you're gonna be, uh, uh, applying for a job, when we go to an applicant, uh, to an interview, we kind of like know already the qualifications, what they're looking for, right? So, uh, they they would mention that even on the post, on the job post. And you know, the uh, uh, they're very transparent and clear. So during the uh, the interview process, uh, you kind of like know already like what they're looking uh, for. So right now, with this rubric, uh, if we're gonna be able to devise this, uh, and make it happen, we would be able, at least the public would know, uh, what's gonna be the criteria in the evaluation of our applicants.
Look, I may, yes, uh, I, I, after I heard your comments, uh, I could have been a little bit clearer with my words uh, and how the process has gone, because when I say that there was deliberation of the council members uh, about the candidates before the decision was made on who you're gonna vote for, that's where you would share your thought process as a council member with the community. Uh, and so I think that's what Councilmember, I don't want to put words in your mouth, I think that's what Councilmember Howard was referring to, that um, that's where you're accountable to the community, that you're sharing your thought process on why you're supporting a particular candidate. Um, and so that's what I meant by deliberation.
Thank you. And for Mayor, can I
Yes.
Uh, say something more? Uh, yeah, let's really like do it. Yeah, we're gonna have a deli- deliberation process where we could uh, really like, uh, uh, express our thoughts. Uh, the 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 problem with that, that I could see, would be the applicants, they don't know beforehand. They were only gonna know after they've been interviewed. So, uh, with this rubric, that we're gonna have a tool, at least our applicants would know, even all of our, uh, uh, residents would know what are the qualification and criteria that we're looking for, for our council. And 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 if everybody would even be looking at the criteria, and then if they know anyone who would pick on the criteria, they would even be the ones who would encourage, uh, encourage them to apply for this position. So, uh, I I know that there's gonna be a deliberation where we would have our own evaluation tool in mind, but it's it's still, uh, proper and our public deserves to know how our applicants will be evaluated before then.
Our public, our voters, don't have a set criteria of reasons they voted for us or anyone else. Um, they look at different attributes of it. And as the representatives of the people of the city, as was mentioned before, you have put your trust and confidence in us to make that decision. And just like you all, the voters, there's different criteria, there's different attributes that you look at when coming to that decision. But ultimately, we've been entrusted with that very, very difficult decision. And just to reiterate what I said before, I don't need necessarily a scorecard or a rubric for me to come to a decision. And for that reason, approving a grading system, um, I I'm not in favor of it. And I I am in favor, and I completely understand what Councilmember Shirley is saying, that I think to help assess our candidates, a tool is coming up with questions that are given to them ahead of time, that are tied to our core values, which I think is important, and it's something that you had mentioned. And using their responses to those questions, uh, in our assessment process. I I think that's important. But once again, creating something that that provides me a scorecard, which voters don't have a scorecard when they make their decision, I don't think, I don't see that as being necessary.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just to clarify, the scorecard is for your own personal use. It's not something that you have to report out on. The public, this is this, you know, again, in a regular rubric, you you have some narrative there that would explain each of those categories are, and I think we each can do that ourselves. But, um, as you said, you like the idea of using core values and you like the idea of having interview questions for those core values. So I guess my question to you is, the first four of these criteria are from our core values and there is an interview question that's associated with each one. So, can you tell me why you are not in favor of that?
No, I'm in favor of questions that are tied to our core values, absolutely. I think that we can add that to the process that the city manager has outlined.
How about these four questions?
That's something that we can discuss. Um, you know, formulating the questions and and, you know, we we might come to the conclusion that these questions are appropriate and we can ask the applicants, absolutely. That's for further discussion. I think the motion, though, is whether or not to approve this score sheet. And I say that because you've added scores for for each column, or a rubric, or whatever known criteria you might use for it. Whether we approve it as is, I think that's the motion. Am I correct?
Uh, yes, well, I I I I moved to 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 use this so that we can have this discussion. So, I I I would, I I'm happy to to edit this. But I I wanted this tool to be the discussion.
Okay, and I think you just mentioned that it it's something that is for each individual.
Correct.
Okay, and the way I see it then is, if I I don't have a problem, if you want to use it, you can use it. But if other council members do not want to use it, then it's it's their prerogative.
Right, the scoring portion is, it's up to the council person. But I, the reason why I I I created this was I wanted to standardize interview questions. Now, to be honest, in some of our appointments to other planning commissioners and and boards and things like that, I've seen people not even ask questions. Um, I've seen people not give any indication of why they chose the person they chose. And so what I'm trying to do is make it so that this is open, so everyone can see, these are the things that are important to us. We've we've had a discussion about what interview questions we'd like to use, because I think that sounds a little bit about what our interests, you know, why, where they lie. And so, um, and so that's why I I created this. So again, maybe you think, you know, if you wanna ignore the scoring portion, you you don't have to use that. I think my my interest lies in, are you interested in these criteria and these interview questions that go along?
And yes, I I mean, that's what I've said from the beginning. And I I think this is good, and I appreciate you taking the time and effort to to pull this together. Having questions that are associated with our core values, absolutely are important. And I think, once again, we should add that to to this entire process to help assess each candidate that goes for each applicant. I think that's important. Where I have the issue is the way that the motion has been stated, it's to approve this product here to be used standardized across the council. And I don't support that, is what I'm saying. And if if we wanna vote on that motion and then further discuss the questions, um, I I I think that makes sense. I think that's something that we can talk about and maybe come up with, uh, consensus on the verbiage for each one of those questions. Anything further?
Well, um, I, you know, I think now that we have, we seconded the motion, it's sort of up for all of us to discuss. So why don't we, why don't we talk about that now? Well, how we wanna make some, we can, you know, consider a substitute motion and and look at those edits. And and Alex, you can correct me if I'm wrong here.
That's right.
Right, we can go ahead and be
Send a motion or a substitute motion?
Yeah, my substitute motion, let's go ahead and and edit this document and come to something that we can maybe all agree on.
It is, can you be more specific with that?
Um, I'd like to go through each one of these criteria and have us agree that, yes, this is a good criteria and this is a good interview question. Or this is not a good criteria. I'd like a different criteria and I'd like a different interview. So, so we go through, um, I believe there's six of them, and we go through each one. And we come up with, maybe we only come up with four. We don't have to use all six. It's only four of us, maybe we just won't read every question. So, so I guess that's the discussion I have.
And omitting the the scoring portion of it?
We don't have to discuss the the scoring.
Well, that's part of the product that you brought forward to to discuss.
We we, uh, I can ignore that.
So, then then the motion is just to discuss the the questions and the criteria that's associated with it.
Correct.
That's the motion.
That's.
We need, Alex, we need to have a second on that, on on that restated motion. Uh, we can have for a second, and there can be discussion on the motion. Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Councilmember Howard? Yes, I couldn't agree with the dialogue between both of you concerned with the, um, evaluation tool. Uh, yes, absolutely. The criteria are consistent with the core values uh, that we all, uh, ultimately exercise ourselves as council members and look for in potential applicants. Uh, when it comes to the questions, uh, I mean, all the way towards, I would rather have, and although these questions are consistent with the criteria, which in turn is consistent with our core values, I would rather leave the process as described in the in place and not have any of the questions scripted whatsoever. There could be so many variables between now and the twenty-fourth. There could be another city issue that arises. Uh, we don't know who the applicants are. We may get a sense of whoever the applicant is and think that one question is more appropriate for them than than another. I would not want to be limited to only scripted questions. I would want some flexibility, some liberty to ask, um, questions that may and not say that they would not be, because again, they're consistent with criteria and core values. But I would like to, the ability to exercise that flexibility, that liberty, uh, to, um, to best explore, uh, you know, and potential, uh, applicants, so.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, uh, so, so our rubric without the the score is also still a rubric. Uh, but it's not the ideal rubric with all my, uh, in our field. Uh, uh, however, that's really like, that's really like a problem and compromise, um, of uh, in here, because, uh, some of us doesn't want really to even sometimes use a rubric. Uh, and 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 then also in the practice of using a rubric, I've been in hiring boards in, uh, many, uh, many times even at work. And then, and even, uh, when when I was and even uh when when I was in the committee in uh uh for the selection of the city manager here at the way Ofs and we use the rubric during the uh during the process and and of course, there were there were scoring there. And it's just uh and it's also very trivial if we have all this uh uh criteria in here, which is, which are actually just the core values we have. Uh, they need to correspond to an interview question and I also very believe that our interview questions should be consistent for all of the applicant. You know, or else uh it may, it 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 will not be clear for all of the applicants if we're gonna be asking different questions uh to every applicant. And that's not the practice uh that is, even when we were having a city manager selection, uh, we have to uh consistent questions that we need to ask uh so that we can better evaluate each applicant from from the other applicants. So uh that's always your thing.
Okay, another discussion? Okay, um, we have a motion, did you have a second? We did.
You had a second.
Okay, okay, um, and can someone restate that motion going to our act on player?
Well, I I moved that we would evaluate each criteria and either accept it or change it uh or delete it. Um, and then review the interview question that would go with that criteria. So in other words, standardize the interview questions and align them with our criteria. Uh, I'm not stating how many criteria to have, but so so I'm doing that, that's essentially the question.
Okay, and eliminating the scoring portion of it?
Yes.
Okay. Can I have a low call over here?
Councilmember Louie?
Aye.
Councilmember Hallack?
No.
Councilmember Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Donaldson?
Aye.
Okay, so now the discussion revolves around the criteria and the interview question.
I'm sorry, I'm really confused, so we we voted on accepting this, I mean, the the motion was to edit it?
The 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 motion, as I just heard it, was to discuss the criteria and interview question and and omit the scoring portion of it. And allow discussion now to 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 approve, mo- uh modify the questions that you propose to to come to an agreement ultimately on those questions that we will ask.
Mr. Mayor, is it possible we retract my vote? I was a bit confused also. Absolutely not discussed.
Okay.
I thought it was a motion we could discuss.
Yes, yeah, I know, it was more obvious.
The, yeah. So, I think we're good at that, yeah, okay. So, discussion on the interview question, uh, Councilmember Shirley?
Let's start with the first one. Diversity and inclusiveness uh creates an environment in which people of all backgrounds backgrounds and cultures feel included, welcome and valued. That's a criteria, that's one of our, that's our first core value and for the interview question, diversity and inclusiveness is one of our three core values, please show how you as a council member would demonstrate this core value.
Okay. Discussion on that question, Councilmember Shirley?
I I feel like this is an important criteria, it's a a new core value for us. And it was recently added by the last council at our our strategic planning meeting. Um, and so I thought it was important to include it as an interview question.
Okay, Councilmember Hallack?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, no comments.
Councilmember Louie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, I I think and I believe that this criterion is very important in our city, because uh at this time our uh the our population is becoming more diverse. And and that's probably one of the reasons as well that I got elected in here, because uh I bring a lot of representation from our city. So uh that's why it's really like very important that to have that and someone uh who will be joining us in the council should be able to acknowledge that uh that our populace is really like very diverse and uh we have to be appreciative for that. For that reason, thank you.
Okay, and I'm okay with that interview question as it's written, I don't have any any issue with that. So we'll go to the next one, uh, which is the fiscal responsibility question. Uh, discussion on that one, Councilmember Shirley?
Um, I think it's important to um show that they are uh have some knowledge about where we are, that our finances. And so, um, again, fiscal responsibility is one of our core values and so I created a question that seems like it could easily apply to sort of where we're at in the city and I want to hear applicants' views on that.
Okay, Councilmember Hallis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, again, uh, the question is consistent with the criteria, which is consistent with our core values and I agree with the verdict shared.
Okay, Councilmember Louie?
Uh, I agree with these top criteria and also the interview question that is corresponding with this criteria. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, the the only modification that I I would recommend in this case, the the first sentence of it is kind of a hypothetical uh in in many ways. I I think the question can stand alone if if the second part is how would you recommend budgeting funds given our current financial responsibility for future needs? I I I would recommend that we omit that that first sentence in that interview question, is uh is there any opposition to doing that?
And and it is likely, city manager, it's likely to allow.
Maybe add some clarification?
Yes, sure.
I think what Councilmember Shirley was trying to get at is is one-time funds, not regularly recurring funds. Um, which from a staff perspective, if I'm what it added, it would help me evaluate uh something specific left added rather than our entire budget, you're saying, that where you go on, that's right. Uh, so I I understand what you're saying, but I think you're talking about one-time, not two-time, all one-time.
Right, so maybe we need to change it to one-time funds?
Yeah, I would, yeah. But it's not everybody gets that kind of kind of a budget walk-in, but.
Right.
Uh.
Funds, we only get to spend less?
I like this artist, uh, or how about surplus funds? Uh, like the harbor funds and.
Okay.
I don't want to actually spell that word.
Right.
Yeah, so maybe it's eliminate the first sentence, how would you recommend budgeting excess surplus funds? And we could all have all of that, right? Given our current financial responsibility and future needs? Because I think we need to finish surplus fund capital, yes, so it would be your state is how would you recommend budgeting one-time surplus funds given our current financial responsibilities and future needs? Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay, alright. Um, then we go on to the third question, which is under the core value of open communications and transparency. Um, discussion on that question, Councilmember Shirley?
Um, again, I felt like this is an important um core value and um I, you know, I think it it tells something, tells us, it's it sets applicants apart. That help, you know, help with the new transparency, again, that's a word that's talked around a lot. Um, and I I view communication as really important uh as a council member. If you're communicating with constituents, you're communicating with your, you know, with it within council meetings, you're communicating regionally. And so I like the idea of having a core value of using this core value. Um, and so uh my question sort of reflects that, how how they would demonstrate communication and transparency and then um I added that, would you recommend the city to improve our achievement of of transparency, because I think we are, we have been working towards that and I'd like to do a side about it.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Hallack?
Again, the language is beautiful. The interview question is consistent with the criteria, which is consistent with our core values.
Okay, Councilmember Louie?
Uh, I agree with this criterion, uh, it's really like very important uh for any council member to be transparent and to have this open communication with our neighbors uh or the whole city of the levels. Thank you.
Thank you, yeah, I I don't have any issue with that question as well. So we'll go on to uh the the next one, which is the criteria and 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 core value that that relates to is responsiveness to community needs and concern, Councilmember Shirley?
Yeah, it's another one of our core values, um, this interview question I I took from Monterey's um interview set of questions just because I liked it and then I matched it with responding to community needs and concerns and so it's a, it's a little bit of a mismatch, but I I I felt like it incorporated and addressed that criteria pretty well.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Hallack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And the language is spot on, the interview question is appropriate, consistent with the criteria, which is consistent.
Alright, thank you, Councilmember Louie?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I don't have any uh motivation for this, it's a great question, thank you.
Alright. We'll move on to the next uh area of criteria, what is conflict management? Um, the one thing that is not in this particular criteria is the corresponding match to the value, so maybe you can speak to that and 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 also offer some commentary?
This is where I sort of worked backwards, in other words, I I got this question from Monterey and I was trying to match it to a core value and I couldn't find the core value we're matched to, so I just uh looked at another rubric, higher rubric, and it um had conflict management, which then coincided with the interview question, so um you know, given, given our situation, I thought this might be um a pertinent interview question to have and so um I put it in there.
Okay, Councilmember Hallack?
Uh, no comments, uh, this is again, consistent with criteria and our core values. No issues with this question?
Okay, Councilmember Louie?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, I believe like uh this is really like a very important criterion as a council member, because uh of course, as a council member, we would usually debate the issues and and of course, we always have, you know, differing views and uh and we should be able to, able to manage uh conflicts uh well and and like professionally and and also um able to show our people the results that we can work together. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, yeah, and and although it does not correspond with the core value, I I think it's an appropriate question as well. So then we'll move on to uh the last criteria, which is uh decision-making, which also kind of falls in that same category, deviating a a little bit from the values, but Councilmember Shirley?
Yeah, exactly, I felt like that interview question, which came directly from Monterey, was was again a pertinent question to ask. And so I came up with a criteria of decision-making.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Hallack?
No issues with this question either.
Okay, Councilmember Louie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, uh, this is really like a great uh criterion, uh, because as council members, uh, we will always be making decisions uh for our great city, so uh it is good to have. Thank you.
Okay, and um I think that's an appropriate question as as well.
Yes, that's a quite frank question, uh, because I actually talked to somebody at the city, because I was confused by this question, what you acted in and and I noticed you changed it a little bit, because they're they're newly districted in their voting and what theirs was.
About this very.
Yeah, about how your personal philosophy or or popular opinion is at odds with what's best for the city, which I think is a pretty subjective statement, uh, because what, who who decided what's in the best interest of the city, right? And I think, and so after talking with the city of Monterey, what they were going for was now that we're a districted city, you represent a neighborhood or a district.
Right.
And how are you going to make decisions for your district that might contradict what is best for the city at large? And that's what they're looking at, and so for me, just as a bureaucrat, I figured out what the words mean.
Yeah.
And this is a little confusing for me, because if I were one of you sitting up here, uh, my personal philosophy or popular opinion is to me was that the city, and so. So, so that might, just a clarification.
And that's a very good point, thank you, uh. Councilmember Shirley, i- is there a modification maybe you would like to make to that question and then that eliminates?
We we can discuss it, we can eliminate the whole thing. Um, I, you know, I'd be interested to hear what others think about it.
Okay, Councilmember Hallack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, you know, I think that this particular question gives a potential applicant the opportunity to express uh unbiased and unselfish uh views and really look at the whole picture as literally what is best for the city rather than as a jury or with their own personal opinion or philosophy maybe. Uh, and I think that it's important to sometimes compartmentalize and separate the two. So I think, uh, as I said earlier, you know, the interview question is approved.
Okay, Councilmember Louie?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, I don't have any problems uh uh with this question at this time, uh, uh, we can leave it as is. Thank you.
Okay, um, and I I guess the the only reason I was asking for a modification is if the applicant had some confusion with that. Um, what I'm hearing though is that there isn't likely to be confusion amongst the applicants then with that question, am I hearing that correctly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I I didn't see the original version, uh, I I'm not personally privy to the um the list of Monterey's questions or their criteria that we're speaking of here, I have not reviewed that. But and so I I can't make a comparison with what the original is relative to, a council member surely has editing. But where I have, oh, you have answered a question, I think that I would understand it fairly clearly.
Like to note too that um, Candace will get this hopefully tomorrow, right, if we can get this done tonight, so they can ask questions.
I don't know who actually can ask for any applications yet, but if we have, we definitely get it out to them and we'll get it out as far as the.
Yeah, that'll be fair.
Okay, then that being the case, unless there is any further comment on that question, I'm I'm okay with that as well. That was my only concern, that there might be some confusion, but I'm okay with it. Okay, then the the next thing I think we need to address is what Councilmember Hallack brought up about a a question that could be asked of applicants that aren't on the the set list. And then Councilmember Hallack, I'll allow you to address that and we can discuss whether or not we want to incorporate that as well into this particular tool.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, again, I'm going to stand on uh my feelings that uh I don't think that we should be scripted at all, that very likely the interview process may be somewhat conditional, uh. Personally, my questions would be query and consistent with uh with our core values and considering what's best for the city. Um, repeat your question specifically please.
Yeah, so the. What I had to ask for before was maybe the possibility of incorporating into the the set. Questions that we just agreed upon, allowing council members to ask their own question, that's not scripted.
Right, thank you for the clarification, so which I admitted today and just reiterated. At one end of the spectrum, I'm aiming towards no scripted questions whatsoever. Uh, but on the other end, it's somewhere in the midst. Are we limited only to these scripted questions as we we've agreed on? Or are we simply using this as certainly a positive or well drafted baseline? For what we're looking for in a potential applicant, but do we still have the liberty to ask at will?
Yeah, and and you're proposing that we do have that option.
Uh, I I I myself wo- would appreciate that flexibility, I don't see why not, and um. Again, is this the extent of the list, I have not seen the other list that we that we're referring to. What will we be discussing more in addition to this, is everyone satisfied with what we have, I I think that this. This very well covers just about any question in general that that we would potentially have any applicants.
So. And and I do think that's consistent amongst the council, um, so what it comes down to is, do we want to have? The flexibility for each council member to ask an off-script question. If it would, and I'm I'm simply addressing something that that maybe you had a desire to do. Um, is that still something that you would you would like to have within this process?
Some fighter in my being wants that freedom and liberty to do so, as I said, we may find ourselves in a conditional situation. For whatever reason, on the date of the twenty fourth. However, again, I agree that these are consistent with a a good. Interview format and I would I would rather be in agreeance with the council. Cohesive, uh, you know, moving forward positively than hinged on my own selfish desires.
So, okay, Councilmember Louie.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, uh, in my mind, it's something that we practice to have. Uh, different questions, um, to to all of these applicants, but that's even very dangerous of. To make us a as a panel, because we may be able to ask questions that are biased or discriminatory. And and we are public, we're we're not in this in closed room or closed section and. And if we're gonna just give, provide anyone the leeway to ask any other questions for. Uh, that's, to me, that's really very dangerous, so for me, it's it's to have, it's fair. Uh, to be uh consistent with our with our questions. And then we ask those questions and of course we have our uh great city authority in here and then. He can vet our questions now in here, if we are even okay, and these are not discriminatory. Because I'm just very uh uh like scared that we do ask something that is. Extrematory, so and 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 biased, so that's my point.
So you would prefer not to have the option to ask your own specific question that is not on the way?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Shirley.
Yeah, I um I agree, I think we should have um our interview questions outlined ahead of time. Also, for the interest of just time, if we think about, we're gonna have three minutes for them to give their their introduction. If we if we do ask questions, yeah, I don't know if we're gonna decide on these things, and that if we ask questions. And if we give a minute for them to respond, that's another six minutes on top of their three minutes, so we're looking at nine minutes. Plus, you know, a few more minutes, so I mean, you know, we're we're looking at. Over ten minutes, between ten and fifteen minutes per each applicant. I think that night is gonna be long, um, already. So I think we wanna, we wanna make sure that we've got a tight process here, and so. Um, my my feelings would be that we would decide on our interview questions tonight. For that, and and we would maybe limit them.
Okay, and and I'm completely okay with that, and it sounds like that's the the law of council as well, so. Uh, those five questions, I think, or correction, those six questions. Uh, are appropriate, now it becomes, what's the process of incorporating that into. Uh, our current process and was described by the the city manager. So, um, one of the things I I would like to propose is that. Uh. Either towards the end, um, of the the uh application or the the process of bringing the applicant forward. Uh, or at the very beginning, we, each council member has the opportunity to pick off of this. List of six questions, a question that you want to ask the applicant. So basically, it would be four questions and you you can pick amongst those six questions. And get your response from from the applicant. Uh. And you can ask the same question to every applicant if you like, you can ask a different question. Uh, I I just think that would be appropriate, I do believe that's the process that. Monterey had had implemented, um, they were successful with it. Uh, what are your thoughts on incorporating these six questions that we just agreed upon, Councilmember Shirley?
Um, I've, I I'd say whatever interview questions we establish, I'd like to make sure they're all asked. Of each applicant, because I think it gives us a full picture of every applicant, so we're not missing any information. From it, so I think we either say there's gonna be six interview questions, we each get four. And the mayor gets two and maybe the vice mayor gets two, because we found that's just six, or we decide, no, let let's cut out two of these, there's only four questions. We each get a question and um and that's the standardized.
Okay, Councilmember Howard.
Thank you, Colonel Nelson, uh, so, uh. As government is sweeping, I am in complete accord with in grants that. These questions are appropriate and should be used as a reference. As a script for for interview. Uh, you did emphasize, uh, you know, the value of cities' time. Uh, I did not know, I did not anticipate that each applicant speculative was. Even three, uh, three minutes per, now it's going from ten minutes per to eighteen minutes per, so we've. We've doubled uh the application time, I do like, uh, and to my point of, uh, you know. Conditionally, we may feel, uh, inclined to ask one applicant's, uh. One question rather than the other, I do think it's uh appropriate for us to. Have the liberty of, uh, a- and in the interest of time. Just one, maybe two, uh, but I think one one question. Per council member, per applicant, um, is appropriate, because each applicant has to study all six.
That's a good point.
And I've got it a little bit smoother than I ever did, I didn't get a chance to study and wanted to open up and do it.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Louie.
Uh. Uh, again, uh, for consistency sake, uh, we have to really ask a- a- ask the six questions, uh. Because we we agree that those are appropriate questions anyways, and then just ask it. To get to all the applicants so that we're gonna be fair. Uh, they will be able to showcase other, uh, their skills and their experiences and whatever in all of the. Uh, questions.
Yeah, I. I'm wary of just asking. Every question to every candidate, I mean, makes for a very long evening, um, I don't know if it's. If it, you know, makes a difference to ask all six questions of every applicant. Uh, so I, for me, in in the interest of time and plus it was a good point, the applicants. Who definitely has to create a response for for each one of these questions, I I would prefer that. Each council member picks a question from this menu list and asks the applicant their questions. That's what I would prefer.
Uh, can I suggest, what if we we cut out the last two and just stick with the criteria that were directly correlated with our core values? Stick with those four questions, and then we each ask one of those four questions.
Councilmember Howard.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Donaldson, I like the way you're hitting that way, we get all four questions out. Public is aware of uh of our direction, the entire scope of all four questions, they need, want you to find those. Not four questions to each applicant, all four questions are asked. In some arrangements or whichever, no, you are.
Yeah, so like, like if applicant A or B comes up, they give their three-minute um introduction. And then I ask the first question, they ask, you know, so we, they each get, and they get one minute. Right, so they'll, so they'll have essentially four minutes of answering questions in addition to their three minutes. Of their introduction.
Well, that's time's illusion, uh, i- i- as far as responses go, I I'm on board with that, I can agree with that, okay, Councilmember Louie.
Uh, yes, uh, for me, it's it's the consistency, so I don't care about the number of questions that. Uh, we need to ask them, but if we ask, uh, four questions to applicant A. Those are also the same questions that we have to ask applicant B, so that, uh, it's gonna be fair and then sort of the public. Won't accuse us of being, not being fair, uh, or maybe if you accuse us of being biased. You know, when we're selecting, uh, questions that we would just like to ask, thank you.
Okay, so if I'm hearing it correctly, then the 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 way that we would incorporate this is after the applicant has made. Their uh initial statement, then we would ask four questions, uh, which. Uh, and that responsiveness to community, the concern, the bottom two, which are conflict management and. Decision making would be deleted, they would answer. Each applicant, those four questions, have one minute to respond. Uh, and then we would continue on with the process that we approved during the last meeting. I- is that what I'm hearing correctly and kind of what we have on, uh, in uh, on consensus? With that that process, Councilmember Shirley.
So just to clarify, we have candidates A through C and we um interview them all. And then, uh, we go for public comment.
Uh, I'm not sure what you mean by interview them all.
But also, so, um, the person, the first person comes up, they give their three-minute remark. And then we, um, are we, so then I, let's say I ask the first question, they give their response. So you ask the second question and and so on. And then we we say, okay, thank you very much, and then applicant two comes up, same thing, three-minute spiel, I ask them. You know, we ask small questions, so then all the applicants are essentially then interviewed. They're all sitting down, and then we go out for public comment. And then we come back, and then we deliberate. And then, so so actual discussion about the applicants. I I I'm just throwing this out there, like.
Yeah, let's 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 do this first part first and then how we're gonna incorporate this, and then we'll talk about the process after. Those questions have been asked and answered, public comments been made, and then what we do after that.
Okay.
Um, so, Councilmember Howard.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion.
Uh, are we seeing well, let's just, let's make sure that we're clear on the process that we we just discussed there. Any questions or issues, Councilmember Halle?
No, no.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, I just have a question, uh, regarding what are our existing motions on the, on the.
Well, at this point, we're just discussing how to incorporate this in, there hasn't been a motion yet. So what I'm trying to do is define how we're gonna in- integrate this into the process that we approved last meeting.
Oh, okay, so, because we we had a motion earlier, uh, from, uh, from Councilmember Shirley. And but, uh, we had a discussion, however, we didn't vote, I don't know.
We we did, and we didn't vote, there was a a clarification on Councilmember Halle's vote.
And so, and that motion was to have this discussion.
That was it, right.
Okay.
So now, as we go through this discussion, what I'm trying to do is define how we're gonna incorporate this into. The existing process that we have already approved, so then we can make a motion. To say this is exactly how we're gonna move forward on the twenty-fourth.
Okay, so, uh, uh, my my question would be, like, when we have already our applicants in here. What's gonna be the process or the order of the applicant, like, how we're gonna be doing that, um. Uh, who's who's gonna be going first or second, third, last?
Right, we we can talk about that as well, but. E- essentially, the the process of the questions that Councilmember Shirley outlined, are there any issues with that?
Well, we, we're gonna have like a three-minute presentation, right, and then each council member would ask one question, in other words, we're gonna. Um, uh, one, like, only have four questions that will be asked. And then our applicant will be given like one minute, one minute to, uh, to respond each question. And I'm good with that, yes, and, uh, and however. After the, the, the questions, our three or four questions, uh. Are we gonna be immediately be going to the next applicant, just that question?
Well, that's that's a good question, so we want to do public comment after. Each candidate has has, uh, answered the questions. Um, is there a procedural, procedural or process?
Uh, it's it's entirely to council how you want to do this, but, uh, at at practice, the way it's been handled. Is all of the candidates were interviewed at one time and then do our public comment, so just for past press, press.
And and I'm okay with that as well. So, that's what we're looking at is. The candidate gives their opening comment, questions are asked, public comment, and then we make a decision. And so your question though is the the order and how we determine who goes first.
Yes, and also who's gonna be the timekeeper, uh, because we mentioned about, okay, oh, thank you, yeah, we just have to make sure, uh, uh. Uh, that we're gonna leave out this process this time very clearly, so that we can even, uh. Incorporate it into the package, together with the questions.
Okay, now in terms of mutual order, I I think what's been used. In 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 other jurisdictions, other times, it was just a a a number pulled from a, from a hat. Um, I know that's. You know, maybe not the the most, uh, I guess analytical way to do it, but. Um, yeah, city managers, uh, city moderators did their, they pulled out a ball, salad bowl. Okay.
Very sophisticated.
Okay, and I I don't mind that. Equal chance, so we can incorporate that as well, any issues with that?
Uh, um, with, uh, just a question, what if, uh, uh, the person. Or the applicant, um, his number got drawn, but he was not yet here. So what happens, uh, because it happened in the Monterey, uh, applicant process, when they pulled one. Name, he wasn't yet there, in other words, he was late.
Yeah, I would say if by the last person, after they're done, and that person did not arrive, and. I I think they're no longer considered, so they would just move to the 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 last. The last position, now maybe there's some gamesmanship with that, that, you know, somebody who wants to be last, but, um. I don't know if that would necessarily. I don't know if that would necessarily happen. Um but I I would I would propose that if if that situation went to arise. Okay, so.
Uh for as long that we have a clear uh process right now, uh so that during on the day. We're doing the interview, we already know what to do. Yeah, and so especially if that kind of unusual situation were to occur.
Okay, so I I think we're good. Um and you know, after. Those steps have been taken, it'll come back to the council and it'll be a roll call of who who is the person that you choose to fill the the vacancy. So.
So there won't be, so no deliberation, no discussion of anything. It's just we just.
Oh, that's correct. That's unless there is a hidden study. Okay, so. Yeah, I think we're we're pretty close here. So any any issue? Before we entertain a motion. Any other discussion? Okay, I'll entertain the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh I would like to make a motion that we proceed with the. Uh appointment application process to include the results of tonight's special meeting. In particular, the implementation of the uh criteria and interview questions. As presented by city council member Shirley. Uh not in their entirety, uh the first or the second, the latter two to be deleted. Four questions which will be asked sequentially, one by each council member during the interview process. Uh to each applicant, after which the applicant will have um. One minute to respond. The applicant will also, preceding the. Question process, will have the usual three minutes. Strive all of this that are in the motion, no, not the usual process to include uh these this criteria and these. Uh followed by. Public comments and then concluding with a vote by city council to appoint new city council.
Start a second.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second. Roll call, Louie.
Councilmember Louie? Uh okay, uh so we can second it, so we can still discuss, right? Uh uh I think do we have to include in the motion the other uh like. Uh things that we like.
Somebody being late.
Yes, and also the the profit of the the order of the the, yeah, so those are the things.
You have to be included. You can include that and take that as a friendly amendment to your motion, a randomized method for selecting the order of of applicants.
A- accepting the friendly amendments, uh the motion in place. Uh as described, remains the same uh in greater detail and with respect to the friendly amendments. To clarify um the order in which the applicants will uh present. And the question by city council will be selected at random. Uh if in the event of one or more applicants is does not arrive in a timely enough fat uh fashion. Uh before the conclusion of the interview and questioning and answer process. Uh then they will be excluded from consideration for our application.
Okay, roll call, Louie.
Councilmember Louie?
Aye.
Councilmember Hallack?
Yes.
Councilmember Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Hamilton.
Aye, motion passed. Next item is uh the next meeting date will be Tuesday, January twenty-fourth at. Six P M. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.